I would like to call the order, the meeting of the Board of Trustees for Long Beach Community College District of January 23rd, 2018. This is a closed session items. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto. Sunny Zia.
We have a call. First item is 1.3, Public Comments on Closed Session Items. Twelve three minutes for each one. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers?
There are none.
There are none, so I do not have to read that right this moment. Then I will though, item 1.4 Personnel Pursuant to Government Code, Public Employee Employment Performance Evaluation Discipline Dismissal Release. You need all the above. And that is all the items we have before us at this time, correct? And we will adjourn to closed session at this time. The meeting is adjourned to closed session. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to reconvene our open session of the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees, meeting for January 23rd, 2018. If everyone could please stand. And I'm going to ask trustee Malauulu, either she or someone in the audience would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
So I see Katie here who works here at the PCC campus, so I'm going to pick you to lead us in the flag salute. Welcome to my district, everybody. Katie's going to do the flag salute.
Pressure's on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Here.
Sunny Zia.
Here.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
Here.
Thank you. There is nothing to report out of our closed session. Item 2.4. 2.5 Approval of Minutes of the December 19th, 2017 Meeting. Motion by trustee Malauulu, second by trustee Zia. Any questions, comments, changes on that? And again, my apologies, you're going to have to really get my attention. But hearing or seeing none. Madam Secretary, roll on item 2.5, please.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Thank you. 2.6 Introduction Special Announcements. Superintendent President?
Yes, sir, we have just a few tonight. We want to congratulate Tina Scruggs Tate on her retirement. Is Tina with us tonight? She has served the district very honorably for 17 years as an Academic Administrative Assistant, and we want to wish her well. We also want to congratulate our very own Executive Vice President, Anne Marie Gable, who is leaving us after 10 and a half years of absolutely fantastic service. For those of you that know her, love her dearly as much as we all do, she will be going a little further south of here, and she is, in my opinion, not only the best Chief Business Officer in the state, but in the nation. So I know that you share my sadness, but yet happiness for her and her family. I want to wish her the best and thank her so much for her service. There will be a lovely party after the State of College to thank her for her service. We also want to let you know that former LBCC football standout, a gentleman by the name of Brian Bremen, number 56 for the Eagles, is playing in the Super Bowl. So isn't that neat? So football fans, please keep an eye on LBCC Viking represented on the Eagles. Tonight, I want to, we are welcoming some new management team members. Marcia Parker, who joins us in the back there. She's going to, you will be approving her as the new Director of Outreach and Recruitment, Community Relations. And having been on the job only three days, she has already created a lead system to capture all people who are interested in coming to LBCC. So she has hit the ground running. Her teammate Joshua Castellanos, they have filled the house at a recruitment that we've had for our Diesel program that was just announced. We got some press coverage for that. And we've just received word that it's almost standing room only in that recruitment event that was held today. So congratulations to them and Sheney Weber's team for that lovely program. I also want to welcome our new Dean of Institutional Effectiveness, Heather von Vulcanberg, who joins us. I think yours is your second day today, so we welcome her to Lauren and Jennifer's team and Amber's team. And Corey Rogers, who I think is tied up over there getting students, getting their bills paid, joins us as Executive Dean of Enrollment Services, so welcome aboard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And if people are not aware, we are at the PCC campus for the annual meeting. We have not done this in many years, and for the first time though, we are in the new Dyer Hall. So it's nice to be back again to the PCC campus and trustee Malauulu's area, but also into the new Dyer Hall. It really is a lot nicer than the old Dyer Hall. It really is. So, all right, we're moving on then. I have the 2.7 reordering of the agenda. I've heard nothing from anyone. I don't believe there's any items that are going to be reordered on the agenda. So move forward on 2.7. 2.8 is the ASB President Report. You're a lot closer now to us.
Hi. Oh, yeah, I know, I love it. It's good to see everybody smiling faces this great Tuesday afternoon. Haven't seen no more hell in a while, so it's good to see you again, buddy. Yeah. So good evening, everyone. The Associated Student Body of LBCC is excited to start off the spring semester on the right foot. We're actually starting off even before the semester begins. This Friday, we're having our first Associated Student Body meeting just to get everybody, you know, rolling, get the ball rolling before the semester even begins. Then this, not this weekend, but the following weekend, we are going to be helping out, us and other student leaders will be helping out with the annual After School All-Star Youth Leadership Conference being held here in Long Beach City College, the Liberal Arts Campus, where 300 inner-city youth from Los Angeles will be coming down to LBCC to pretty much understand like the whole college life. They're going to be like going through breakout sessions with not only us, but also other student leaders that are involved with clubs on campus. And then during their break, they're going to be, their lunch break, they're going to also be able to like play with us with like, we're just going to get like all the games out there, volleyball, ping pong, all that kind of stuff, just to get more energy going between us. For the first week of school, we're actually going to have welcome back events. We always do coffee and donuts in the mornings at PCC and LAC Mondays, Wednesdays, as well as a barbecue and also giveaways for the students. So Scantrons, green books, pens and pencils, and all that such. And also following that, the following week, no, two weeks after that, Join a Club Day will be Thursday, January 15th at the Liberal Arts Campus from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. in the E Quad. It gives our students the opportunity to find out more information about clubs on campus and be able to socialize with others as well. The following week, it will be at the Pacific Coast Campus on Wednesday, January 21st. And then just a few dates to look out for, for our Sustainability Fair in April and Multicultural Festival that we always have every year in May. Thank you very much, and you all have a good day.
Thank you.
Oh, I'll also be here for most of the meeting this time, so yeah, got you guys. I'm free.
Very good, thank you. Now we're to presentations. Student Success Scorecard, item 3.1. This is an informational item only. I'll turn it over to Superintendent President.
We have none. Oh, 2.9 was public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, because we have.
But we have none.
Madam Secretary, 2.9, Public Comments on Agenda Items, do we have any?
There are none.
Thank you. So we will move forward, 2.9, let the record show there were no one taking out a card to speak. 3.1, Student Success Scorecard, informational item.
Thank you, I'd like to introduce Lauren Sisenko, our Director of Institutional Effectiveness, to come forward to make this presentation, and she is going to introduce her co-presenters.
Good evening, Board President Kellogg, other trustees, Superintendent President Romali, other college leadership, our faculty, staff, and community. My name is Lauren Sisenko, and I'm the Director of Institutional Research. And it's my pleasure to talk with you tonight about the 2017 Student Success Scorecard with my colleague, Dr. Amber Rock. We are just going to dive right in, that's okay. We did provide updated PowerPoint handouts to you, so that you have those in front of you. As you know, many of you know, the Student Success Scorecard is a state-level accountability report for our college. It was developed by the California Community College Board of Governors as a standard performance measure system. So for our college, we have to publicly post our scorecard. It's on our website homepage. You can navigate to it. At the bottom of our webpage, there's a link, which will then take you to the scorecard homepage, and then you just can select Long Beach City College, or you can select any of the other 113 community colleges across the state, as well as any, you could actually look at aggregate statewide information. The scorecard profiles the students who we serve, so it describes who they are. And then it also gives us some really important information on how our students are doing here at the college. How well are we serving them? Are they meeting their goals? The scorecard gives us a snapshot description of the students we serve, but it also helps group students by different characteristics so that we can track them over time. And I'm going to just describe some of these cohorts, and then we'll get into some of the outcome data. The first is our intent-to-complete cohort. This is defined by the state as students who come to the college, and they came in the 2010-11 academic year. They earned at least six units, and they attempted math or English within their first three years of being here. And by that behavior, we believe that they're here for some sort of completion. So we track these students to see how many of them end up earning a certificate, a degree, or transferring to university. The next cohort that the scorecard gives information about is called the Career and Technical Education Cohort. And this group is characterized by students who earn at least eight units within a particular CTE discipline within three years of taking an initial CTE course in that discipline. And that initial course-taking happened in the 2010-11 academic year. And again, we track this group over six years to see if they earned a certificate, degree, or transferred to a university. The next set of cohorts are our Basic Skills or Remedial Cohorts. So these are groups of students who started in the 10-11, or who enrolled in an English, math, or English as a second language course below transfer level in the 2010-11 academic year. And we track these students to see if they end up taking a transfer level course within that discipline over time. So are they getting out of basic skills? This year's scorecard has a new cohort called the Transfer Level Achievement Cohort. This is a group of students who were first-time students a little bit more recently than some of the other cohorts. So they were first-time students in 2014-15. They also met the intent-to-complete cohort criteria, so they earned at least six units and attempted math or English. And we track these students a little bit more closely, so only within a one- and two-year timeframe, to see if they complete transfer level math or English. And we're going to talk a little bit later about why this new metric is particularly relevant today because of some new legislation that's just come out. The next cohort that is included on the scorecard is called the Skills Builders Cohort. And this was a new cohort added on the 2016 scorecard. And it was an effort by the state to sort of expand our definition of success away from just our intent-to-complete students. So these students are folks who come to the college for a short amount of time. They don't take a lot of courses, but they're very successful in those courses. And they don't have a completion. And what we're looking at is their wage increases from before they came to the college to after. And then the last cohort that's included on the scorecard is the Career Development and College Preparation Cohort. And this really small group of students here at Long Beach City College really has to do with students who are taking some of our non-credit courses. They're also called Enhanced Funded Non-Credit Courses. And so these students take two or more of these courses, starting in 2010-11, and they're completing at least four hours of positive attendance in these courses within three years. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rock to talk about some of the outcomes.
So as Lauren mentioned, Skills Builders was added to the scorecard in 2016. Again, these are students who come to the college for a short amount of time. They take a few number of units. They're very successful, and they don't have any kind of completion. So as you can see in the table, there's a small group of students, but they all have increases in their median wages in all the areas. In 2017, Transfer Level Achievement was also added to the scorecard. These are students who are first time in 2014-15, who are intent-to-complete, who complete a transfer level course in math or English in their first or second year. When we compare our students to the state average, we see that they perform lower in both math and English. So we know from our local strategic plan that our transfer level achievement has been improving over time, so we expect to see these percentages to increase, especially since we have targeted efforts in math and English to get our students to transfer level math and English. This metric will become critical in the coming years as our innovations mature and requirements under the new AB 705 are implemented. As a reminder, AB 705 requires us to maximize the probability that students will complete transfer level math and English within a one-year timeframe. So moving on to the next set of outcomes, this looks at Basic Skills Progress Rate. So for remedial English, almost half of our students complete a college-level English course within six years. For math, we see that about a third of our students complete a college-level math course when they started in remedial math. This is about 5.5% lower than the state average. Another outcome the scorecard provides is Persistence in 30 Units. This is where we do well. Our students, we know our students are persisting at 79%, and we know that our students are completing 30 units at 69%. However, what we need to focus on is whether or not our students are taking the right 30 units and helping them make sure that they're achieving the right 30 and getting to their educational goal.
So the next outcomes that we're turning to is completion. And this sort of narrative around our student success is one that we've actually heard for a couple of years on our scorecard. Our students are persisting, many of them, but we see a big dip in the, are they making it that final, to the finish line? That final amount of credits? Are they making the right credits to complete? So we see in our, among our intent-to-complete students, 39.9% of our students are actually reaching completion, and this is below the state average of 48%. And when we look at the CTE cohort, it's a little bit higher, 46.7, but that's still below the state average. And it's still less than half of the students who we believe are seeking that completion actually are doing so. Again, this is not a new story. We saw this on last year's scorecard, and it's something that the college has been grappling with. And that's reflected in our strategic plan, and it is reflected in the key efforts that Superintendent President Romali has been focused on. So when we talk about this, we talk about there are four major efforts that are happening right now that we think will have an impact on the completion story. The first one is around Basic Skills Acceleration. Again, getting students through on basic skills either by shortening the course sequence, offering different types of classroom innovations. And both our groups of English and math faculty have been very hard at work trying to figure out how to best serve students in these ways. In addition to that, we know that we're going to be expanding multiple measures to better place students when they're coming here in these subjects. The next effort is around Guided Pathways.
Can I ask you a quick question? So we're below the state average. Is it something about our demographics? Is it something about what we are or not doing? What's your hypothesis, if you will, about why we're there? I know you've thought a lot about this.
Yeah. I think there are a lot of different variables that help explain where we're at with completion. And I think our demographic does have something to do with that. The students who are coming here are, you know, we know that almost all of our students are in basic skills. So if we can crack the nut of math basic skills for our students and really support them through that barrier, our completion rate will increase dramatically. And I don't, but I don't think that is terribly unique, actually. I think that there are colleges across the state who are grappling with this same challenge.
But we're reasonably below the state average. And so I'm, I know these are very complex to try and figure out. And I know that we're working hard. I know that math faculty in particular is working very hard to figure out ways to attack this issue.
There, go ahead.
That metric in particular doesn't necessarily reflect the innovations that math has been doing, such as Alex and Compressed Section. So it's a 2010-11 cohort. And so it goes for six years, but math faculty's piloted Alex in 2014. So it's not really reflective in that statistic. So in one to two years, I expect that that percentage will increase and be closer to the state average.
But in the transfer level attainment, that's why, in that new metric, and that it's a bit more timely, so for students who have come to our class, that's also why it is an important addition to the scorecard. Okay, so the next body of work that the college has been undertaking to really try and get at this completion challenge is around the piloting of guided pathways. The college is participating in two major efforts right now around the California Guided Pathways Initiative, as well as we are preparing an 18-month action plan for the California Community College Guided Pathways effort. And so that work that is really focused on trying to help create a bit more structure for our students so that they are making more informed decisions to get to their goals in a more timely way, we expect will have an impact on that, making the last, the progress in their last mile towards completion. President Romali has been launching a new effort for 45 to completion in the recent weeks, where we have teams working on a new schedule, marketing material, IT support for students who have completed 45 or more units. It's really trying to help identify the exact courses that those students need and provide them with the right opportunity and structure to get the courses that they need for completion. And that's being offered in spring 2018. And then the last effort that really helps us focus on this completion challenge is our Starfish Early Alert and Positive Communication Campaigns that have been, we've been doing now since fall 2017. Nine faculty piloted Starfish Early Alert, and that's really about trying to capture more information about when students start struggling, so that we're less reactive to students who are struggling and when they get, are on probation, and then trying to provide services, but trying to understand when they start to struggle a little bit earlier and be more proactive in our approach to their needs. And then also changing the way we're talking to students in providing some positive reinforcement when students are doing things well. I know that that has been a major campaign of our Triple SP and our communications teams.
And you say nine faculty are piloting this?
Nine faculty piloted it in the fall, but they are doubling that to 18 in the spring. And we are hoping that we can start demonstrating the positive impact on that so that then more faculty will join the implementation.
Is there an implementation strategy that will involve 100 faculty or 200 faculty or full-time faculty? Or is it just sort of, you know, train some, and then train some more, and train some more?
I believe there is an entire rollout plan, Doug. I actually don't have all of the details on that. I would refer to my colleague Sonia De La Torre to give you the detail on that. But I believe there is a whole plan. And that is the end of our presentation today. If there are any questions?
Questions, members of the board? Chair Rick Nixon, Vice President Zia.
Thank you. Great job on the presentation. I especially appreciate Amber's clarification at the end. This is an old set of data that we're really going with, which is unfortunate, and I know we have exerted a lot of time, effort, human capital to make sure these numbers go up. The one I'm particularly interested in is the Skills Builder. And I appreciate you mentioning that. That seems to be the nuanced items that is underneath. So what I'm, am I seeing this correctly? What's the business about the valid Social Security number? Does this mean that our DACA students or others? So how is this enforced? How is this looked at? And are these, is this demographic or cohort just pretty much excludes?
Yeah, that's a really great, great observation and question. These definitions are all provided by the state, and they do limit it to students who have valid Social Security numbers for almost all of the cohorts. And in particular, why it's important for Skills Builders is because they're looking at the Employment Development Department data to look at wages pre and post. And the only metric, or the only ID that they can match on is Social Security numbers. So that's the only way that I believe is available to get, look at the outcomes here. We did look it up because we thought that it was an important point that we have about 30, there's over 35,000 students who are enrolled in the 16-17 academic year. And we believe about 4.7% of those students, so around 1,600, did not have valid Social Security numbers. So even if they were, should be in an intent-to-complete, they would not be reflected in these state metrics.
But they can enroll?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the distinction. In other words, they're not prevented, precluded from enrolling these courses. They just will not go against the statistics that we keep.
Right.
Okay. And how do we check, who's doing the enforcement or the checking? Is it, does it go all the way up to EDD and then they come back with the statistics? Or is our personnel looking at, oh, is the Social Security number valid? Is this one not, you know? How is, if you can walk through the mechanics with.
Sure. So the data that are presented on the scorecard, all of our data are submitted from our college locally to the chancellor's office. They call it the MIS system, but it's their state data system. And from there, they do a match to the Employment Development Department directly. So they will take the student records and give them to the Employment Development Department. And the Employment Development Department will then give back the information around the wage gain to the MIS system. And then the state publishes it through the scorecard. We actually have been very fortunate here locally to do a local data link directly with EDD. And that's allowed us to sort of look at different types of groups. So whereas this is everybody who's defined as a Skills Builder, we actually can look at wage gains among our intent-to-complete students. And what does that look like? And so we do have some of that information locally, but we are limited. It will only be for students who have a Social Security number because EDD, that's the only variable that they are able to link on.
So the students that are involved or enrolled in the Pre-Aprentice Program that we have, does that go into the statistics as well, or no?
I'm not exactly sure what Pre-Aprentice Program.
I think it's non-credited. And perhaps Superintendent President Romali. I think it's non-credited, and perhaps Superintendent President Romali, you can.
I don't recall if it's not for credit or non-credit, but we can find that out for you. Be happy to get back to you on that.
Sure. That would be great, because we do have enrollment in that capacity.
We, we were able in our last.
Designed to go into the construction jobs. That's what, last time I checked. So, I don't know if that necessarily qualifies under the skill builders category. That's what the question really is.
My sense is it is the skills builder, but I want to make sure that I'm accurate on that, so we'll look that up and get back to you.
That would be great. Thank you.
And in our last local data connection, we were able to include, again, student groups who we wouldn't normally be able to. So, it is, if we don't currently do it, it is something that we could add potentially in the future.
Other questions, members of the board on this particular item? Seeing none. All right. Thank you very much.
Great job.
Now to consent calendar. This is items 4.3 to 4.18. Are there any items that wish to be pulled from the consent calendar at this time by the members? Seeing, hearing, none. Entertainer motion to approve. This is items 4.3 to 4.18. Student trustee may vote on all except for, will be reflected on item 4.17, 4.18.
May be moved.
So, we'll do separate motions on that, so, correct?
Who made the motion?
Have not done it. Motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Baxter, to approve the consent calendar. Madam Secretary, should I make it to 4.16, from 4.3 to 4.16? Do a separate one with the student trustee?
I'll record the exception, so go ahead.
All right. So noted. So, it will be item 4.3 to 4.18 with the student trustee exempt on 4.17, 4.18. So, there's a motion and a second, Otto and Baxter. No items be pulled. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the consent calendar items.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Where'd she go?
She disappeared.
Are you kidding me?
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Azia.
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Thank you. We're now jumping forward. Consent calendar is approved to Human Resources, starting with 5.1. This is the approval of Dr. Stipin for Dr. Heather. Just show up, it happens. You must be doing a great job. Stipin for Dr. Heather Van Valkenburg. This is a action item, so this item, recommended action, the board of trustees approve the doctoral stipend as submitted. Madam Secretary, do I have to read this as well for the record? I do. Managed professional development evaluation personnel plan provides for doctoral stipend in the amount of $2,250 per year for a management employee who holds a doctoral degree. So, there's a motion by trustee Azia, second by trustee Baxter, to approve 5.1. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.1.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu. Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Azia.
Aye.
Thank you. And carries 5.2, approval of Dr. O'Stappen for Dr. Jennifer Roden. Again, this is the board trustees approve the doctoral stipend for Jennifer Roden as submitted. The Managed Professional Development Evaluation Personnel Plan provided for a doctoral stipend in the amount of $2,250 per year for a management employee who holds a doctoral degree. Can I entertain a motion and a second? Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Otto. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing done. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.2.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu. Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Azia.
Aye.
5.2 carries. Item 5.3, resolution, reduction of classified service. This is to adopt resolution, reduction of classifieds service as submitted, and this is per our educational code. This is for the classified employees shall be subject to layoff for lack of work or lack of funds. I'll entertain a motion and a second. Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Malauulu. Item 5.3. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing done? I'm sorry?
Yeah, she's back, okay. I just wondered how she could be.
I, I just wanted to.
I'm sorry. Do you have something, Vice President? This is like, this is like watching a Family Feud table here. I don't quite, I can't see who's down there. Does anyone have any questions on this item? Chair recognizes the Vice President. I can't see Vice President Azia. Sunny?
Yes, President Kellogg, thank you. I just wanted to point out that this, the reason why there's an elimination or reduction is because of the grant funding that is being, that is coming to an end, and the employees were notified ahead of time, so there was full knowledge.
There's a motion and a second on item 5.3. Madam Secretary, please call the roll. Trustee Baxter, second by trustee Malauulu.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Azia.
Aye.
I'm sorry, was I supposed to ask the student trustee for the advisory vote?
No, not on.
All right. Thank you. 5.3 carries. Item 5.4, employment contract. Elizabeth Miller, interim vice president of finance facilities and technological services. Student trustee will not be able to vote on this one. Board of trustees approve the employment contract for Elizabeth Miller, interim vice president of finance facilities and technology services as submitted. This employee, the employment contract provides for a term of employment from February 6, 2018, through September 30, 2018, with an annual compensation of $229,154. I'll entertain a motion and a second. Motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Azia on this item. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Azia.
Aye.
Congratulations. Betty's back.
Betty's back.
Six, item six, our point six, Academic Senate Title V. This is student trustee. You will be able to vote on this item. 6.1, new modified and inactive courses. This is a action item. Is there any comment, question at the time from the Academic Senate down there? Anything at all? Just wave if you want to, but are we good?
So, Dr. Scott has a summary of everything that we're bringing forward.
Academic Affairs is very pleased to be presenting the board tonight with curriculum for your approval. I realize it's quite extensive, and so, I did want to take a minute to summarize it for, for all of you. Some of it is cleanup, but much of it involves very exciting new classes and programs, or modifications to classes and programs to bring them up to date, or to align them more closely with industry needs. All of this work took a great deal of time and effort on many people's parts. Firstly, the disciplined faculty, who, whose programs are represented here tonight, put in many, many hours to create the courses and curriculum. Our curriculum committee and the associated subcommittees did a huge amount of work overseeing the changes in the new courses. I'd also like to acknowledge the work of Michelle Grimes-Hillman, our dean of academic affairs, and Kenna Hillman, our new interim associate dean of academic affairs, and particularly for her and her role as former chair of the curriculum committee. They worked tirelessly to put this together for you tonight. They've reorganized it to try to provide you with significant information, so that you understand why we made the changes that we did. And I'd also like to acknowledge Jorge Choa, to my left, for stepping in to be interim chair of curriculum until a new chair is appointed. So, it's been a lot of work. There are three major curriculum items tonight. The first area involves courses, and it's new, new courses, in activations or modifications. We're really very happy to be presenting some non-credit courses to you. Three of them are in the computer office systems area overseen by Gene Carbonaro. I don't know if he's here. And they are designed to support non-credit certificates that will be new in basic information competency and computer hardware repair. We're also very happy to be presenting a number of ESL non-credit courses overseen by Lee Douglas. And we are converting these into non-credit to better serve our population. These are no-cost courses for our students, which we believe will also increase access, which will also increase our enrollment. Also, we're presenting a new, a new course for work experience in the computer office systems, which is critical for our students to get this kind of experience. We also have new credit courses coming forward in the cost area. These are primarily designed to update the curriculum. We have new reading courses coming forward to accelerate the path for our students to get to college-level reading proficiency. We have a number of sign language courses. They are designed to support a new associate degree in sign language and deaf culture, and a certificate of achievement in interpreting to align with Cal State Long Beach. And we're very pleased to have a new course in sociology to support our honors program. Also contained in this first section are a number of modified courses. These are cleanup, which could be name changes, CID descriptor changes, which are needed for articulation purposes. There, there, in some cases, are regulation compliance issues. We may be putting in prerequisites to help our students be more successful in their classes and those kinds of things. We also have a segment on distance learning, so we're adding in this component to some existing courses, so they can be offered in an online format. And we have just a very few class size reductions, which we typically don't do, but these are based on safety, and in some cases, the number of machines that may be available, for example, in sewing. We shouldn't really be putting in more students than we have machines. And then, we also have a few activations due primarily to the ESL courses being made non-credit, so we'll be, we would be eliminating some of the credit courses. The next section, 6.2, involves programs of study, and these are new modifications or in activations. In some cases, we may, we may be eliminating outdated certificates and replacing them with ones that better serve our students and industry needs. There are also some title changes. For the new certificates, we've provided labor market information for the board, so that you can understand why these are, are critical. We have new certificates of accomplishment going forward in Microsoft Essentials, Digital and Social Media, Customer Relations, and SQL Programming Specialist. We also have a new degree coming forward tonight, a new associate of science degree in engineering technology, and we would like to thank Juan Flores. I don't know if he's here, but he did a lot of work on that. And it also has fairly extensive information regarding labor market data and our rationale. And then, the final piece, six.
I'm sorry. You move forward before, so we can, you're, you're summarizing all the others on the Academic Senate. You've moved beyond 6.1. You're now into 6.2, 6.3.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. I mean, it's all, but let's, are there any questions from the members of the board on 6.1 at this time, new to modify the inactive courses? Chair recognizes trustee Otto.
Looking.
Doug, talk into that, please.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one. Let me speak into two.
His light wasn't lit.
So, not many people in the audience will remember this song, but Antonio will. In the 60s, there was a song by the Buffalo Springfield called "Something's Happening Here." Does anybody remember that song?
Okay, I'm not raising my hand, but yes.
Every time that we've had classes come to the board for approval, historically, there would be five, six, maybe 10 programs eliminated, programs looked at. And when I got these agenda items, I said, "Something's happening here. Something amazing is happening here. We've got a lot that we're, that we're looking at, and there's a lot being done." So, Vice President Scott, first, there's a lot that we're being asked to do here. How do we support this? How do we, how do we pay for all these things that you're, you're suggesting? In general?
Well, the curriculum's been developed, and faculty do that as part of their regular load. Full-time faculty is part of the contract. We're going to be working with marketing to ensure that these programs are marketed We are going to be using adult ed money to create an infrastructure for our non-credit area. We know that we need, for example, to have a registration process for non-credit. We need a transcript process for non-credit. We need, we need counselors. We need A and R people. So, there's a meeting being scheduled for next week or the week after to try to put this infrastructure into place. We've got a lot of new non-credit courses coming forward. This is really the beginning of a lot of them, and it's critical that we create that infrastructure. But we do have adult money to get started with it, and that's, that's the plan there. I don't know if there's a specific question you have beyond that.
That's a pretty good answer to what I was, what I was getting at. What's the relationship between these changes and the jobs and careers, things that we're trying to achieve?
Well, it's really critical that we keep our curriculum up to date, so that we're responsive to what industry needs. Some of the changes that are coming forward today were the result of advisory committee recommendations. So, it could be name changes, changes in courses, changes in curriculum. The cost area has done a, the computer office systems area has done a particularly good job with that. I was fortunate to attend their most recent advisory committee. It was very large, a lot of industry partners there with us. And so, it's, this, it's critical that we do that. And it's critical that we then market these and that students understand the kind of jobs that they can get with these, with these courses. And that would lead to how it connects really with guided pathways.
And I saw that there was a lot of cleanup in these class descriptions and, and the way that they're presented in the catalog. What, what, what does the clean, why is the cleanup required? What is it? What are we doing?
It could be anything from name changes, or in one case, it said that we didn't offer the classes at all different ti, in all of our four sessions. So, we wanted to be sure that students knew that we offered them in all, in all four sessions. In some cases, it's grammar. It could be clarity, minor name changes, again, based on what advisory committee, committees have recommended. It could be a compliance issue, having to do with, for example, work experience, those kinds of things.
And are we done with that cleanup, or is, are we going to see more of it in the future?
I don't know that we'll ever be done with it.
This is like the full-time job.
It's just, there's a lot of curriculum, and it's constantly changing, and we're constantly looking at it and seeing that we could be clearer. There's changes to Title V that may require different kinds of cleanup. It, it's a constant activity for us.
Right. And I, I saw a lot of switching from credit to non-credit, and I thought, well, why are we doing that? I, you know, does that affect the way we get paid by the state? And what else is coming in the area of non-credit?
Well, the state has raised the FTES on what they pay for non-credit that's in a career development pathway, the CDCP. So, courses that we are able to bundle in some manner, that could be, for example, a welding class and a work preparation class, we can combine those into a non-credit certificate and be paid at the same rate as the credit rate. And so, the state did that to incentivize us to create these kinds of certificates, so that students can get more, have more easy access to these kinds of jobs. A lot of times, they're first-level jobs, you know, as we're looking at stackable certificates, it's the lower level, but it does get people into the works, into the workforce. And we've got a lot of them coming. We've got courses coming forward in the next, you know, few weeks and months in HVAC, child development, counseling, such as career exploration, culinary, citizenship, drafting, fashion design, forklift, horticulture, reading. We have a lot of them coming forward. But they, they're also no-cost for our students, which is really critical. And they allow students who are undocumented to attend college, and that's another, another benefit for our community.
So, we're working smarter, more effectively, more efficiently, to bring money in, so that we can do these things, and that's what these things are designed to do?
Correct. And we're also trying to work very carefully with our community partners. Lee Douglas and I went to Centro Cha just, just before the, the break, and talked to them about some of the needs that they have. They would like us to offer citizenship, GED. They would like some culinary. They would like home health aid and those kind of courses. So, we're also trying to be responsive, and they would like them offered there, and we would certainly be happy to comply with that.
So, it's also a partial answer to the question I asked before about the relationship between these changes or curriculum ideas and jobs and careers? It enhances what we're doing in that area as well?
Yes. Many of the non-credit are entry-level positions that will help people get a foot in the door, and then, we would certainly welcome them to come back and take additional courses. and then we would certainly welcome them to come back and take additional courses, get additional certificates, perhaps get a degree. Yeah, we want these kind of off-ramps and on-ramps for our students who.
Point of order, President Kellogg, we don't have a motion on the floor. We can't have discussion yet.
I was just waiting till if you had any more. Just to put 6.1 into a motion, a second, a motion by trustee Malalulu, second by trustee Zia on this item. Trustee Otto, do you have more questions on item 6.1, please?
No, that was my last question, and I just wanted to say that I'm really pleased with what we're doing here. It seems like something that is really purposeful and not just cleaning the stuff up, but really sort of aligning us with our goals, with our strategic plan, and taking seriously the things that we say we're going to do, and aligning what it is that we do with what it is that we're doing. So, thanks, that's all.
Other items on 6.1 at this time? Chair recognizes Vice President Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I just wanted to commend our staff. Thank you, Vice President Scott. This is fantastic. And Superintendent President Romali, this is another testament of your leadership, the work that you're doing, and the level of rigor and consideration and care you're bringing to the table. We're finally bringing this college into the community and building partnerships, and that's what I'm talking about. We've been waiting for this day, and I really appreciate the level of care and consideration. You all have been given to this and the partnerships that you're building, both internally and externally, and I want to commend you. Thank you.
Other questions on item 6.1? If not, there's a motion, a second on the floor. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll on item 6.1, please?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 6.2, this is a continuation, new modified and activated programs of study, degrees and certificates to begin with. Could I entertain a motion, a second, please? Motion by Virginia Baxter, second by trustee Malalulu. Item 6.2. Questions, comments, staff report?
Yes, you've already heard it, so I won't repeat it, but I would like to acknowledge that Juan Flores is here, and he created the new Associate of Science Degree in Engineering Technology, which is really critical. So, thank you, Juan.
Thank you. Members of the board, questions, comments at this time? Hearing none, motion, a second on item 6.2. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
Motion carries, 6.3, course addition to General Education Plan A and graduation. This is just a Board of Trustees' approved edition of Reed 182AX to General Education Plan A and Graduation Proficiency effective June, or fall 2018 as submitted. Entertain a motion, a second, please. Motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Malalulu. Discussion on item 6.3. Members of the board? Any additional information needed on this item? Academic Senate?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. You explained it.
Thank you.
I just would add, I guess, that it's the accelerated reading classes that are being added to Plan A, but it's, again, to try to get our students through to college-level reading quickly, more quickly.
Very good. I know there are comments, members of the board at this time. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 6.3.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
Aye.
At item carries, we're now to Student Support Services, 7.1, Integrated Plan of Student Success and Support Programs, Basic Skills Initiative and Student Equity. This is a Board of Trustee adopt the integrated plan, submit the plan to the Chancellor's Office by January 31st as submitted. Entertain a motion, a second. Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter on item 7.1. Questions, comments? At this time, I'm sorry, do we need a report at any time? Self-examinatory? Very good. Questions, comments, members of the board? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 7.1.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
I believe you have a presentation.
Do you want to do the presentation?
You do.
That's why I was saying, someone stop me.
I think we should see the presentation first before we.
Hold the vote.
I retract my vote. I'm open-minded now until I hear the presentation.
All right. Superintendent President, I'll recognize you, Romali. You can go from there.
Well, you have a vote of confidence going in. I don't need to feel good.
I don't think this was a real controversial one either, by the way, so don't snatch victory and defeat together.
That's right.
Sure, there.
You saw our fabulous faculty at work and our fabulous administrators at work on, in the sixes. Now we're in the sevens, where you're going to see them again. We have a great presentation to you on the Integrated Plan, Triple SP, Basic Skills and Student Equity, by Louis Amador, Elijah Sims, Shawna Hagaman, and Dr. Jennifer Roden and Sonia Delatorre. Welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent President Romali. Good evening, and thank you to the Board of Trustees, our Superintendent President Romali, our Vice Presidents, and other members of our leadership from the LBCC community. My name is Louis Amador. I'm the Director for Student Equity, and just to preface, unfortunately, due to a family commitment, Mr. Elijah Sims is not available today, but we're going to be pinching for him. As the name implies, the Integrated Plan is an integration of the three individual plans for Basic Skills Initiative, Student Equity, and Student Success and Support Program. Each plan has a faculty and administrative co-chair, and it's important to note that all of these individuals were intimately involved in the development of the Integrated Plan. In tonight's presentation, we're going to be sharing with you how the plan was developed, data on our efforts to date, as well as what we're going to be doing moving forward to help move the needle on student success.
Good evening. Last fall, the Chancellor's Office suspended the submission of individual annual plans for the Basic Skills Initiative, Student Equity, and the Student Success and Support Program as they were working on preparing a template for the Integrated Plan. In a memo from the Chancellor's Office, they highlighted that we were moving in this direction because the ultimate goal of each of these plans is the same, that is, to increase student success and close achievement gaps. Moreover, each of these plans use the same success indicators, which are access, retention, persistence, completion, and transfer. With that in mind, and under the guidance of the Student Success Committee, the co-chairs of these plans identified a timeline to complete the Integrated Plan over the summer. We hosted three workshops to engage the campus community in the development of the Integrated Plan. We had 29 faculty, 30 staff and administrators, and nine students participate in that process. In the first workshop, we focused our efforts and identified the five goals of the Integrated Plan. The second workshop was an opportunity to identify the strategies that would help us execute the goals of the Integrated Plan. And in the third workshop, we presented the draft to all of the participants. Through the process, we collected feedback and began to identify projects that are relevant to the work of the Integrated Plan. Discussions and activities at each of these workshops were also informed by the Completion by Design framework. Lastly, it's important to note that we have vetted the Integrated Plan through various shared governance bodies, including Academic Senate, the College Planning Committee, Student Success Committee, and the Associated Student Body.
So these are the goals that were developed through those workshops. They include ensuring students are learning, that we are helping students complete in transition, that we're going to treat college preparedness as an issue of equity. We're going to revitalize a positive, mutually supportive, and caring Long Beach City community, Long Beach City College community, excuse me, and then we're going to streamline and simplify business processes for students and staff. It's important to note that language was pulled right out of the Strategic Plan to develop these goals, as well as to ensure clear alignment with our institutional priorities that included guided pathways.
So part of the exercise of the Integrated Plan was to identify our past goals, collect data, and understand the findings. In the following slides, we want to provide highlights from some of that data. For the Student Success and Support Program, you will see we're continuing to see high completion of assessment and orientation for first-time students. We've increased the delivery of counseling services and interventions for students on probation. We have also seen a significant decrease in the number of students that are undeclared at the college.
In relation to the Basic Skills Initiative, data reflected the need to reexamine the curriculum and instructional practices used for students placed at the lowest level of reading. As a result, a self-paced, individualized option was created. In addition, data also supported further examination of the effectiveness of supplemental instruction, SI, along with the feasibility of its expansion.
Regarding the data for student equity, what you'll see here is that we are moving in a positive direction, specifically the areas highlighted in green, but that we still have work to do. In order to help orient what's on the screen, I'm just going to quickly go over the different colors and figures. The green, as I just mentioned, highlight areas where we have had positive movement. It's worth noting that we're only looking at change over time. Therefore, the non-highlighted areas, the white areas, are areas where we have no real change over time. And then the pink highlights show the areas and groups where we do need to do more work. The boxes where it shows no figures or color are where the groups are not identified as disproportionately impacted. Moving back up to the green areas, LBCC is moving in a positive direction with respect to things like basic skills math and English, as well as degree completion, where rates are increasing for several of our disproportionately impacted students. Regarding our transfer metric, rates are also increasing for the African-American, Black, as well as Hispanic-Latino, and students who are economically disadvantaged. For our reading metric, rates have increased for our white students, as well as students with disabilities. And then LBCC is moving in a positive direction with our Pacific Islander students regarding access. Areas where there's been little to no change include rates for students with disability, transfer rates, excuse me, for students with disabilities. And then LBCC has more work to do regarding the basic skills reading for African-American, Black, and male students. Oh, excuse me, I jumped, that was going back into, going into the pink now. It's important to note that our CTE population has been in decline, which is impacting the metric we use to assess goal attainment. Discontinuance continues to play a role in the reporting of this figure. So while certificates are going down, it is, you know, important to note that degree completion rates are actually going up. And then finally, areas where we do need to do more work include access rates for African-American, Black, and Native American students, and then certificate and course completion for a variety of our DI groups.
So now that we're equipped with this data, moving forward, the Integrated Plan will continue to focus on success indicators of access, completion, and retention. In the subsequent slides, we will provide examples of some of the strategies, projects, and efforts that will help us achieve our goals. Moreover, it's important to note that these strategies are connected with the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan and Year One Priorities that you heard about at the last board meeting. Under access, we are focusing activities such as high school outreach, Viking Express Days, counseling plus registration to further streamline the matriculation process for all our students. We are also expanding online educational resource efforts designed to provide free textbooks to students, and continuing to make progress on the development of a welcome center on each of our campuses.
In the area of basic skills completion, everything from curriculum design and pedagogy to faculty professional development and multiple measures have been reimagined and continue to evolve within the context of AB 705.
Regarding course completion, you've already heard from the Student Success Scorecard about our efforts to scale up Starfish Early Alert. We're hoping that that continues in the success that we've been having with it. We're also going to be developing educational planning efforts for our DI groups. We're going to be expanding the use of Tableau in an effort to develop, simplifying data displays of disaggregated course data through that system. We've also been working on faculty self-observation activities with the University of Southern California Center for Urban Education, or Q. And we're going to continue to support implementation of guided pathways. Regarding certificate, degree, and transfer completion, very similar to some of the things that we've already mentioned for course completion, we're going to be expanding our educational planning efforts. We're going to be targeting communication to students at specific benchmarks, helping to nudge them or congratulate them as they're progressing forward. We're going to explore wraparound programs for our disproportionately impacted students, and then we're going to support collaboration between CTE and strong workforce.
I'd like to talk about student engagement with you for a little bit. Currently, we are working to continue and to increase equitable student engagement. As an institution, we accept the moral, ethical, and educational obligation to modify policies and practices in ways that are academically challenging and socially supportive of students, especially those from underrepresented groups. Engagement is the single most significant predictor of persistence. We have offered an alumni series featuring our successful students representing our disproportionately represented groups. We continue to support our learning communities such as Puente and Amoja. We supported the tour of the historically Black colleges, increasing our transfer rates to these institutions. We strive to provide outreach services that focus on our disproportionately represented groups. Faculty and staff participated in the Black Minds Matter series, focusing on Black boys and men in education. The Black Minds Matter series addressed the experiences and realities of Black males in education. Long Beach City College now has the opportunity to build a network with leaders in the field of engagement, and continue to provide professional development, and continue to promote the concept of intentional design to ensure educational success for our students of color. Long Beach City Colleges work closely with the Center for Urban Education. Faculty participated in classroom observations designed by the Center for Urban Education. This activity promotes culturally responsive teaching. These equity-minded practitioners are willing to take personal responsibility for the success of their students and critically reassess their own practices. It also requires that practitioners are race-conscious and aware of the social and historical context of exclusionary practices. In order to understand and become equity-minded, it warrants that various practitioners, faculty, administration, and staff assess and acknowledge that their practices may not be working. It takes understanding of inequities as a dysfunction of the various structures, policies, and practices that they can control. Equity-minded practitioners question their own assumptions, recognize stereotypes that harm student success, and continually reassess their practices to create change. Part of taking on this framework is that institution and practitioners become accountable for the success of their students and see racial gaps as their personal responsibility and institutional responsibility. These high-impact activities increase students' sense of belonging and in turn increase persistence. We plan to implement more strategies such as the campaign to learn each student's name, develop an institute for students of color, conduct more surveys, incorporate equity-mindedness in the writing of student learning outcomes, and develop more focus groups to gain the student voice. I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Questions, members of the board? We do have a motion, a second, on this item. Questions from members of the board? I would just say that, proving again that in the community college system in California, there is, planning is critical to everything we do, resource data, and this is another example of where we really do have a, we attempt to address issues and we move forward. And also, the line I always remember saying is that there's a policy procedure and a plan for everything we do in this system. for everything we do in this system. And that's because we really try to capture and realize where we are weak, where we're strong, and this is just another good example, just by going through it, you see all the detail and the effort that goes into it. It's not we're just opening up our doors, we think about who's coming through those doors and how we can help them be success. And these type of presentations, coming from the planning background, I always personally enjoy this, but I know a lot of people, they look at planning, but I just tell everyone, good planning does work. It has been proven time and time again, that good planning does work. So, anyway, members of the board, questions, comments at this time? Chair recognizes trustee Baxter, followed by trustee Zia.
I just wanted to salute you. I know this is a lot of hard work, and doing it during the summer when, you know, you could be doing other things, and we appreciate it very much. You're going in the right direction.
Press president, Zia.
Yes, I too wanted to echo trustee Baxter's sentiments, and I also appreciate the final slide. As the only Persian-Jewish kid in a very, very white-dominated school, I had to educate my teachers that, first of all, it's not Iran. If you really want to piss off an Iranian or Persian, call it Iran. So I'm just educating you all here, or Iranian-American, it's Iran. And it was really nice to see that what we're doing, the efforts that we're doing in the community, I love this, Black Minds Matter, that's what I'm talking about. This is the kind of work that we need to be doing out there. And also, you know, this is something that's been on my to-do list, and I've been harping on this, is that we need to go after hiring and recruiting people who look like our students, who understand their background. And I really appreciate that you guys are, this is a testament and an example of the effort you're putting into what needs to be done at this community college district. It's time, and thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other members of the board? Chair recognizes trustee Malalulu.
You all did such a great job, and I really appreciate you mixing up the speakers, so it's one speaker is presenting a separate slide. I really appreciate that. I have a quick question on page five of your presentation. Is that a comprehensive list of the ethnicities represented on campus? Page five, Myra, I don't know if you can put that up of the presentation?
It is not. Those particular groups represent the ones that have been identified as disproportionately impacted based off of the metric that was previously offered by the chancellor's office. It's changing now, and so we're going to be looking at new data.
Is it possible, and I understand that they are disproportionately impacted, but is it possible for us to see a comprehensive listing of all ethnicities on campus and how they compare? I know that that's not your target goal for this presentation, but seeing this made me really curious. For one, I didn't notice that any Asians were disproportionately impacted, and in this particular community here, where the PCC campus sits, there's a vast number of Asians surrounding us, and I'm pretty sure that some of them would probably qualify to at least have a line item on that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how much work it would entail for you to even just send the board a comprehensive list of all the ethnicities. And also, and it's not just Asians, that's just the one that stood out, but I would also like to see, in addition to, and by the way, this is great, I mean, this is really well-done. In addition to the completion and certificate and transfer, how would we quantify students who enroll and remain enrolled for X amount of time if we can somehow track students who are on a six-year plan? You know, how can we track that data to help them and identify why? And I know that we've talked about that, just to figure out some work. Some can only do one class a semester, some have families, but if we can offer support for those students in that area, you know, there's so many things that we've discussed behind the scenes that, you know, I'd like to see how many start and linger, but I don't know how you would do that. That's why you guys have that great job, to figure it out.
Well, first, let me start by saying that I don't think what you're asking for is unreasonable, and I do think it's important information that we should collect and synthesize into something that we can capture and make sense of, and which is why we do have a very strong working relationship with institutional effectiveness. We work very closely with the analysts. So I do think that we can start to have discussions about broadening this out, so that we can continue to disaggregate the data in ways that are meaningful to the things that are relevant for our growth and overall student success.
Thank you.
Other members? Chair recognizes trustee Otto.
I do think that this is a really impressive effort and shows a lot of work over a period of time to carefully integrate what we're trying to do here with strategies as to how to get there. I had a couple of specific questions, because to be honest with you, I don't know the details or the nuances of either Tableau or Q, QQ. Could you tell me how those work, and then I've got a general question about that.
Do you want to speak about Tableau?
Hi, I will field the Tableau question, because I'm all about Tableau. I could do a little Tableau dance here. Tableau is a data platform that the Office of Institutional Effectiveness has been using to try and increase access and understanding to data across the campus. It allows us to visualize data in ways that we haven't done before, and take one data report that might be good for, say, the Board of Trustees as an audience, and users can drill into the data visualization and sort of slice and dice the information in different ways, and ask different types of questions, different levels of questions of the data that we don't, that we have previously not had the capacity to do. And so that's something that the Equity Team has been helping us pilot and sort of have a proof of concept around the usefulness of this platform, and we've received feedback from different faculty and staff that it is very, very, it's allowed them to ask questions that they haven't really done before, and so it's something that we would like to continue to develop.
And Q?
The minute I say it, you're going to know it. Q stands for the Center of Urban Education at USC. So what was the question about Q?
Well, it says faculty self-observation activities with Q. Are you partnering? I know that they had done these missing, what was the number?
Missing eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
Way back when? Are we in that same kind of partnership now with them, or?
We're farther along now.
Okay.
Thank goodness, you know, and so we're doing lots of different things with Q, but that was one example.
You mean, we found the eighty-seven?
Well, yes, yes, we found them, and they all have their PhD. So...
We'll take credit for all of that.
Yes, we will. What we're doing in that specific instance with Q is faculty have become more reflective, and so they have a system of assisting faculty observe each other in a very non-threatening way to look at how they're reacting or not reacting to certain students in the classroom, because we all think we're doing a great job, and we are doing a great job, but we want to increase our relationships with the students in the disproportionately impacted groups. So it's kind of a peer-to-peer observation sort of activity.
Do you do any sort of first-year program stuff where you focus on first year specifically, or is that just part of what the outcome of this is?
You know, I have to ask Triple S P, are we doing anything first year? We did have first-year experience. It went by the wayside, so we don't have anything completely dedicated to our first-year students right now, per se, as a learning community, communities cohort, but we could look into that.
And I'm not asking you to, you guys are the experts, and I trust you to do the right things. I know, for example, at LaGuardia Community College, they've made a name on achieving success for first-year students as a way to completion, but you've got a toolkit here with a bunch of stuff that you're trying to integrate. And then my last question is, so, you've got a plan, you've got various things that you're going to do, how are you measuring whether this particular plan is successful? I know you've got goals and things like that, but is it, does it go to institutional effectiveness? Is it, tell us how that works.
Sure, and I'm going to ask Lauren to come up again, but every plan on this campus has an evaluation, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and we're going to evaluate this plan at every level, at the goal level, at the strategic level, right? Thanks, Lauren.
Sure. We predict that the state will end up having defining outcomes for integrated plan that we will have to track, that are standardized across campuses, but in addition to that, the Office of Institutional Effectiveness will help develop an evaluation plan for the integrated plan that will focus both on the process of how we are implementing different parts of the plan, as well as local outcomes that might be different from the state-defined outcomes that are of importance to us.
And I think we can all see that with performance funding built into the governor's budget message at the beginning of this month, that the state's going to be saying, so how do we know how we reward or fund colleges? We need this data, we need a way to do it. So I think in what I see around the state, that we're ahead of the curve in terms of getting that kind of information, and it's being very proactive, giving the way that colleges and community colleges in California will be funded in the future.
Other members at this time? Hearing none, thank you again. I mean, it was interesting that you stood up because you answered some questions, but when you say integrated planning, but people understand, I was watching going, you have this plan, which has focused, you brought up institutional research, which is critical on doing this, we jumped over it because student success, it goes into there, and to trustee Otto's point, is that with the old integrated planning, you're going to have to have results, and so it all works, and it's impressive when you watch it happen. I also want to thank you, and you made a comment in there, you used, OER is the commentary, Open Enrollment Resources, but the fact is, for the, for the life of me, I don't understand why the entire system has not really embraced that. I understand there are certain people that do utilize it, but if we are going to have a more affordable education, and it is the most doable, available resource we have, and eventually, the entire system is going to embrace that going online. I know there's challenges, I know there's issues that go with it, but the opportunity to expand that, and so I was very pleased to see it embedded in your presentation, because you've heard us say before, it's not fair to turn to a student and say, the choice is a textbook or a meal. That's not, that's something we shouldn't even have in discussion, so I applaud you for having that embedded in that presentation as well. No other comments, members of the board at this time? Then, Madam Secretary, we have a motion of second, Zia and Baxter. We almost got through the roll call. Can you do it again?
Again?
The last roll call is student trustee Chavez.
Okay. Thank goodness, thank you very much. Moving on. Moving now to administrative services, this is eight-point-one resolution, non-resident tuition-free fees for 2018-19. This is an action item, entertain a motion in a second, please. Motion by trustee Malalulu, second by trustee Otto. Superintendent President, do you have anything on this one? It's, anyone wish to?
We are presenting you with our recommendation for the new non-resident tuition rate, and I will turn it over to EVP Gabel to add any further detail.
Does anyone have any questions on this one? Fairly straightforward. And Marie, do you have something you want to add on this one?
Not unless there's a question. This is just something that the board's required to do every year.
Right.
Vice President Gabel, EVP Gabel, how does our tuition rate compare to neighboring colleges or the state? You know, where are we on the, I guess, on the pie chart, the scale?
So, we're about in the middle. There is an attached chart of some surrounding districts, the information that we had. So with our, you know, Cerritos will be at $275 total, we're proposing to be at $274. Coast and Compton are proposing at $270. Los Angeles is proposing $251, and then North Orange County Community College District's proposing $277. So those are really our main contiguous districts, so we're kind of right in the middle of them, but if you pull up the chart that was attached to the board item, it does show more districts.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item eight-point-one.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez.
Thank you, Adam Carey's. Item eight-point-two, this is an action item, this is revised board policy administrative regulations for 8,000 grants. I was going to read it very quickly, but just so the board approve and adopt the board policy for grants as submitted.
So...
There's a motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Otto. Superintendent President, any other comments on this one?
Nothing to add unless there are any questions, it's just the final reading.
Questions, members of the board at this time? Hearing none, there's a motion of second on the floor. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item eight-point-two.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez.
Adam Carey's. Reports, academic senate president.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I want to thank the faculty who have been working diligently throughout the winter, so the faculty work is never finished. I want to acknowledge Kenna Hillman and Michelle Grams-Hillman and Jennifer Holmgren, who have been working with the faculty in another important cleanup of the curriculum, and that is the program coding. There's been several workshops that have been held and more to be held in the future, and that's going to ensure that our curriculum and our information is going to be accurate or is going to be better, going to be a lot better for job placement and also job needs, and a lot of other good information that's going to be available to us because of that. I also want to acknowledge the work of Wendy Corning. She is instrumental in a lot of the non-credit courses that are going to be coming. We, thanks to the board for approving some of them today, but more of them will be coming, but she has been working with the faculty in getting some of those courses forward so that they can be approved here and eventually be offered for the benefit of the students. I also want to acknowledge Shana Hagman, that's just left, for carrying out very good on-course training last week. For the entire week, she offered training on how to better engage the students in the classroom, as well as in the offices, so I know that many college staff, faculty have taken advantage of that. And on a personal note, I want to let the board know that I've spent a couple of days at the chancellor's office on January the ninth, working with the state academic senate, and we are going to be host, no, 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 we are going to be presenting a career and non-credit education institute. Not here, it's going to be in Orange County, but that is going to be in May, and that's going to be informing the colleges in the south area about any changes and/or the benefits for career-changing education and non-credit, and anything that we need to know about that. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, Ann Ingo, who's not in the agenda, but she's going to take the last minute of my time for her report.
Thank you, Howard. Yes, I want to let you know that the Classified Senate will be hosting the 4CS Gathering of the South at LAC this Thursday. Classified Senate representatives will be visiting from all over the SoCal region, and President Marmali will be speaking on meaningful governance. Dr. Darla Cooper will be presenting on Guided Pathways, we're very excited about that. She is the new director, executive director for the RP Group, and we look forward to hearing what she has to say. I want to acknowledge C.C. Sadler and Sarah Neal for their efforts on making this event possible. Also want you to know that every month, we send out an email entitled Communication Corner, where we inform Classified of important issues, highlight Classified's success, and note on what's happening in the board's perspective. and note on what's happening in the board of trustees' agenda in case they would like to come and, and see it for themselves. And, uh, we are making good progress with the, uh, our integration into the shared governance committees on campus, um, and it's really exciting to see all the different, uh, the Classified from all the different areas of campus step up and, uh, wanna be involved. I'm very proud of what our senate and our Classified have accomplished so far this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we actually have to revise our agenda, because we should have an item, I believe, on Classified Senate as well, but I'm not quite sure what.
I copied the last year PCC template, so.
This was your second meeting, so.
It's already been on once.
They don't have to, it's, it'll be, it'll be part of it, it'll be part of the new, yeah, no, it's just, uh, it was an oversight, good recovery. Uh, nine point two, Superintendent President.
Yes, thank you, um, I wanna congratulate everyone for their work on enrollment management, we are up one hundred, a little bit over one hundred, FTES in winter, this has been a hard-fought, uh, battle, but we know that we have the best community college out there in terms of opportunity for students, so congratulations on keeping the numbers ticking upward. Um, we are implementing a number of strategies in our enrollment management plan, it is exceedingly comprehensive, but we've begun work on approximately forty-three of the forty-nine tasks that we wanna complete, so we're gonna see good progress there. We're working very hard on a strategy right now to reach out to over two thousand students who have forty-five credits yet to complete, and design a special schedule created just for them, based on the classes that they need to complete. I wanna give a big, uh, shout-out to, uh, Dean Hillman and Dean Hillman, and Dean Corral, who I think, uh, just left, and the entire management team who have led this, as well as Brent in Academic Affairs, who've done a tremendous job creating this along with the department chairs, who were very, very helpful in this, to get those students across the finish line. When we are done with that important task, we will move to the over a thousand students who have over sixty credits, so that we can offer them an opportunity to finish out their degree, because they are really close to that finish line. Um, we are also working hard on, uh, bringing our, what's called a conversion yield rate, which is a ratio of enrollees to applicants up to the national average. Uh, if we are successful in doing so by improving our internal and external operations and processes, uh, we will no longer struggle with employment, because there are so many folks who are interested in attending here, and we wanna, uh, work on improving that, so I'm really excited about that work taking place. Um, we also are working, we have a meeting, uh, next week with Cal State Long Beach, Cal State Long Beach, as you know, re, is a very popular des, transfer destination, and they reject over eighty thousand applicants each term, and those applicants do not always show up at other Cal States, and so, where do they go? Well, we'd like to grab them up, and so, um, and offer them an opportunity to be a part of the promise at Long Beach City College, and then have the opportunity to then transfer back to Long Beach State in their junior year. Uh, so we have upcoming meetings with them to see if it is possible to pilot something as part of the promise, and if successful, to roll it out statewide, so that's very, I'm very, very hopeful, uh, on that. We are also working on creating an enrollment management quarterly report, that will talk about our, the progress that we make pro, uh, quarterly, and put an ROI attached to it, so we can see what's working and what's not, so we can shift our dollars accordingly and be very nimble with that, and not wait a year to see how we did, but stay, keep our thumb on top of it. Um, the city, as you know, is very interested in, uh, increasing the number of interns and pre-apprenticeships to, uh, lower the poverty rate, so we are working with the city to create not only internships and pre-apprenticeship programs, but a true college-to-careers program that creates stackable credentials that lead to a career ladder and social mobility um, in Long Beach. It's very exciting, um, we're going, we're going to go the whole way, so far more updates to come, but putting our money where our mouth is, we are going to be taking interns in from our journalism and graphics arts courses into our public relations and communications team, we're gonna take about four to six in, so they can help us with our social media and content writing, and get exposure to that here at Long Beach City College, so we are excited about that. In terms of a budget update, the, as you know, the governor came out with his proposed budget in January, we still have work to do to ensure that that is the final budget that comes out in the May approved budget. Um, there are, we've been working very hard behind the scenes to ensure that there is a hold harmless, um, tool for stable, uh, districts in stabilization, currently, there's fifty-one in stabilization and restoration in the state of California, so we're working very hard to make sure that that hold harmless agreement is appropriately executed. Um, we have Anne Marie Gable, who sits on the CBO Funding Formula Model Committee, I am also the chair of the Subcommittee for Stabilization for the Single Caucus District, um, and we have Keith Curry, who is our, uh, the CEO at Compton, is our area CEO rep, who is sitting on that committee, so we were hoping to influence that, uh, not only to the advantage of everyone, but certainly to our advantage as well. Um, we're also excited about performance funding components, as well as, uh, funding components for disproportionately impacted students in that, uh, proposed funding formula update. Um, one thing I wanted to let people know about, um, a student came forward with a fabulous idea for, to have mothers' rooms or lactation rooms on campus, and what we found out is that they already exist, but not many people know about them, so I, we will be doing some marketing around that to let folks know that we're a welcome environment for mothers, we have over thirty percent of our students are, uh, parents, and we wanna make sure that it's a friendly environment with them, so please share that good word with your colleagues. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Student trustee.
Good evening, everyone, uh, it's great to be here at the PC campus today, um, so in less than two weeks, uh, classrooms will resume and parking will once again be one hour wait. Uh, as for upcoming, as for the upcoming semester, uh, there's many activities and efforts I look forward to being part of. Uh, I'll start, uh, by, by mentioning that this weekend, I'll be away in Sacramento attending the CCLC Annual Legislative Conference, uh, where fellow student trustees from the surrounding area will be attending, student trustees from Compton, Co' Yumak, Grassmont, Mansack, El Camino, De'Anza, and Diablo Valley will be attending, and those are just some of the student trustees. Uh, some of the, uh, some of the sessions that will be, that I will be attending during the, during the conference are socioeconomic data revolving around, uh, desegregation of student success, the promise of community colleges, and implementation of AB-19. Um, so once again, uh, this will be occurring this weekend. Uh, aside from that, I'm, I'm, aside from that, I'm completing my USC application at the moment, because it's due next Thursday, and I, I look forward to being, uh, to being back here on campus, attending classes and meetings and being behind schedule again, at least I try not to be. Um, I will mention two more things, um, two small things, 'cause I expect, uh, the board of trustees to be attending, uh, which is, um, join a club day, and that's when all the, a lot, a lot of our faculty and staff is out there, um, and I looked, um, I look forward to seeing President Kellogg, uh, giving out some hot dogs.
Again.
What's the date?
Uh, that'll be December, uh, December, I'm still stuck in twenty seventeen.
Put it on my calendar.
Um, the dates are February fifteenth here at the LAC, LAC campus, and then February twenty-first at the PC campus from ten AM to two PM. So, yeah, aside from that, that concludes my report. Thank you so much.
February fifteenth, February twenty-first, all right. Uh, thank you, board of trustees, I'm gonna ask, uh, trustee Malauulu, followed by trustee Otto, followed by trustee Baxter, finishing up with trustee Zia. Trustee Malauulu?
Yes, um, before I give you my very short report, just, um, a couple of events that I attended, uh, since our last meeting, I just wanted to, um, follow-up on Superintendent Romali's, uh, um, which she mentioned about the nursing moms room, that was something that we, um, discussed, I think it was in the last fiscal year, um, and we were very happy to have facilities to provide, and I agree with you that we should market that, that I think that that's an excellent selling point for moms to return to school, and, um, you know, great minds think alike, 'cause that's something that has been brought up before. Anyway, since our last meeting, um, it was, it was really nice to have a break, and I hope everybody had a break, and I hope, uh, everybody had a chance to relax and recoup and prepare over winter for the new semester, and gearing up for all the exciting things that lead up to graduation. Um, it was pretty slow for me, I'm excited. Uh, we participated in the MLK Parade on January thirteenth, um, the float looks even better during the day, I just wanna say, because it's brown, and it's, you know, nighttime, and the lights of the holiday, you know, but during the day, it really looks like a float, so I'm gonna be talking about that float for a while. So the float is, I believe, in storage, if I'm not mistaken, until May, it will come back out for the pride parade, and then it'll go back in storage again until, uh, Veterans Day, so we got really good use out of it, and again, I'm very happy. And, um, yesterday, I, we, uh, a few of us participated in what I think is probably the first-ever wall-breaking ceremony at three oh nine Pine, um, and I just, you know, took out a lot of pent-up aggression, hitting that hammer on the wall.
A lot of aggression.
Yes, it was a lot of fun.
She put a big hole in the wall.
But, uh, so, uh, we're very excited to partner with small businesses and to support the community, especially to have a presence in downtown Long Beach. Um, I can't wait to see the front of the facility, to have Long Beach City College loud and proud in, in such a, uh, busy, vibrant downtown area, um, and I hope that we use that as a recruiting tool, not only for small business, but also for the college itself. I just, you know, location, 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 it's a great place to be. And then, uh, last night, um, a few of us were also at the Port of Long Beach Harbor Commission meeting, and, um, President Romali spoke, um, in favor of a Peer B project, and I supported her remarks of how much that will help our college community in terms of jobs, apprenticeships with our unions, and being able to support our students to be able to find and connect with employment, um, through the port, how fantastic is that? Uh, when I think about all the other community colleges in the area, I mean, just, we're so blessed to, you know, everything that we have here, with the port and the airport and all the different activities happening in Long Beach, and we are in, we're in with the port, we're in with the city, I mean, it just, this is the place to be for students. So if we can find a way to let everybody know, um, what we offer for our students, I think we'll do really well with enrollment. And that's it, everybody have a great return to second semester, thank you.
Trustee Otto? Great, thanks. Um, I don't have a lot to report, uh, I was at the, uh, opening yesterday of the Innovation Center, uh, Long Beach City College, the city of Long Beach, and Blank Spaces, which is a private group that sets up these workspaces all over the country, uh, led by a Harvard-trained architect who's made this his sort of personal, uh, business and calling to, to, to get people out of Starbucks and get them into places where they can really interact and do, uh, work together. It was a particularly poignant moment for me, because I remember when we first opened that seven years ago as a center to do classes for, um, uh, businesses in downtown Long Beach, and it was okay, but it was Long Beach City College only, I mean, we partnered with the city of Long Beach, they basically gifted us the space to do that, but it's very vibrant now, uh, I think it's gonna take off. The downtown is much, is a much different place than it used to be in terms of foot traffic and, uh, people getting around, and so I was, uh, very excited to see, uh, to, to see that open with our, uh, not only our backing, but we're very prominent in the, in the doing of that, the mayor was there, um, First District Councilwoman was there, and the gentleman who's, uh, the, the president of the private business was there as well. Um, I'm on my way to Sacramento next weekend for the Community College League of California Conference, where we're gonna talk about mostly the budget, the governor's budget, which is, uh, a good budget for community colleges, but, uh, it raises a lot of questions about what's happening, particularly in how community colleges will be funded. I have been assured that that's what we're gonna be learning about while we are up there, and so we can bring that information back to you, uh, so, uh, that very, very important question for us in terms of how we do what we do, uh, hopefully we'll have some more direction. Remember, this is the governor's proposed budget, we'll come back with a May fifteen revise, and, uh, and then the, uh, the legislature will get an opportunity to pass it, but, uh, it's very important that we all be engaged in that conversation, and I'm sure that we will be, and, uh, I'm looking forward to the, uh, the restarting of school, I'm, congratulations on your numbers for, uh, the winter session, uh, we're always trying to get that needle moving in terms of, uh, what we're gonna be funded for, and, uh, it's good to hear that we've got, that, that, that the beginning of our enrollment management program is working. And I will close by saying, in the interest of accountability, which is a very important thing, we're gonna ask our student trustee to call us on Friday to tell us whether he got his USC application done, uh, that's all. Keep you guys updated on that. Trustee Baxter.
Yes, thank you, President Kellogg, first of all, I wanna tell Student Trustee Chavez that there's a scholarship called the Norman Topping Scholarship, which is only for community college transfer students going to USC, so look that up on the website and see if the deadline is over, I'm not sure, uh, because I think you would be a very good candidate, okay? So, and, and you report back to me on that.
Will do.
All right, uh, also, um, I was in the Martin Luther King Parade, it's always great to be in the community, we had such a positive, um, uh, feeling in the crowd, and people cheering, and yay, Long Beach City College and all that, so, um, thank you for all the people, Shan Mavel and all the other people who put together the float and got us going there, and, uh, Josh Castellanos, I wanna tell you that somehow, you're, we were on my sister's Facebook in Florida. Now, she doesn't know how she got it on her computer, but she, were you in a parade? Were you standing by a banner? So, I salute you for that. Um, then also, I wanna congratulate President Romali, I think we're on the right road, and I'm very proud of all the different things that she's come up with, the, uh, relationship with Cal State Long Beach, and, um, uh, increasing our enrollment, and I just wanna praise her and tell her, I'm certainly glad you're here, and, uh, keep up the good work. Um, she spoke at Temple Israel last week, uh, to an enthusiastic crowd, invited all to come to lunch at the bistro, uh, so I wanna see how she's gonna pay for that, but anyway, not my problem. Um, uh, also, I wanna thank, uh, Anne Marie Gable for ten years of fantastic contributions to the college, uh, your management of the bond money, your management of the college money is truly appreciated, I, it's a, a bittersweet thing, I'm happy for you because you're gonna become a vice chancellor, but I'm sad that you're leaving us, uh, so, and good luck and best wishes and all that. Um, also, I too was at three oh nine Pine, I now know I will not be in a fight with Vivian Malauulu, because she broke a hole in that wall just with one strike, and this little dent, and she put the, the hammer all the way through, so keep hammers away from her. And then, finally, I wanna thank the voters of the fifth district, uh, I learned last week that, uh, I did not have an opponent, and therefore, um, I will, uh, be serving another four years, uh, on the board of trustees, and I wanna thank the voters for their support and their vote of confidence, thanks.
Trustee Zia.
Yes, thank you, um, I'm not gonna echo all the parades and events that I went, uh, to with fellow trustees, but, uh, you know, amongst those were MLK Parade and supporting President Romali at, uh, Temple Israel. I don't recall you offering to pay, um, I was still there, I think, I'm a witness, um, so if anybody makes you pay, uh, you could use me as a witness, uh, Dr. Romali. Um, I also wanted to just really congratulate you for getting out in the community, saying, you know, getting the message out, you're doing incredible, incredible work, and, gosh, I'm so happy and, uh, really, really impressed, really happy that you're here and you're leading our district, it's transformational, and thank you so much for all that you're doing. Um, I love this idea of these students that don't get accepted at Cal State Long Beach coming back, it's brilliant, just absolutely brilliant, um, and the partnership with the Port of Long Beach, uh, I, I really enjoyed having you there and speak, we had about, um, over two hundred and thirty people at last night's, uh, hearing for, um, the next major program at the Port of Long Beach, uh, for those of you who don't know, I'm the senior civil engineer who will be leading that program, it's an eight hundred and twenty million dollar program that will, uh, benefit, uh, over eleven hundred jobs in our community, it's also, um, has a nexus with our pre-apprenticeship program that our students go through, um, it's a free program, and they can have the ability to compete and be an apprentice with the unions and hopefully get, uh, one of those jobs, and I was really, really glad to see our leadership there, um, Superintendent President, Dr. Romali did a fantastic job, spoke very eloquently, I wanna thank trustee Baxter for being there, being patient, and of course trustee Malauulu for being there, being patient, and speaking. Malauulu for being there, being patient and speaking. Really meant a lot to have your support for our students and our community. I too had an opportunity to use that little hammer. I think I just had, did a pretend breaking. It was very gentle, so there are some pictures out there. Please try not to laugh when you look at them. And I also wanted to mention that Superintendent President Dr. Romali mentioned this earlier about internship opportunities. This is something that's very near and dear to me, and I've been pressing the industry and companies that work with us to call them to action to hire our students. Currently, we have the company HDR, who's in the industry of engineering and architectural discipline, that is working with Miles Nevin and Melissa Infuzino. So if students are interested in wanting to get into that sector and wanting to get into the internship roles, this is an opportunity for them to inquire about it and ask Superintendent President Romali for the details of how to get involved in that. They are looking for multiple interns. So hopefully they'll lead the way, continually lead the way. Last year, they hired Jennifer Hicks. This year, I've asked them to expand on that. And lastly, I just wanted to also thank Executive Vice President Anne Marie Gabel. I wanted to personally thank you for your great contribution to the district and for working with me through many questions and, you know, the effort to improve our processes and enhance where there was enhancements needed. And you did a fantastic job, you and your team. You led the way, so thank you. I really appreciate your contribution, and I will miss you. And I, just to be truthful, the last thing I wanted to end on is that because it's flu season, I wanted to offer our students and our community this information that Supervisor Janice Hahn's office has put out, that there will be free flu vaccine clinic, that you can go get vaccination on Wednesday, the 24th, and it's between 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Long Beach Health Department, Room 14, located at 2525 Grand Avenue. And there's no need for appointments, and anyone six months or older can take advantage of that. Thank you so much. That concludes my remarks. President Kellam.
Thank you. I'll finish with it, to begin with Anne Marie Gabel. I told her when we had this last meeting, I said the going-away president will be able to have the meeting within two hours. So your last memory of Long Beach Community College Board meeting would be, hopefully, hopefully, we're not completely done yet. But also, my sincere thanks to all your work that you've done. You've served on this board during a time where, where a few of us, for some of the darkest financial times, we had to really deal with some things that were outside of our control, obviously, with the recessions. But how you handled yourself, how you carried yourself professionally, working with the college, as well as your reputation statewide with the organization. So obviously, I'm very proud of what you've done. I wish you the very best. She is going to a district where they have what they call basic aid, which means she immediately gets a bump, which I never quite understand, but the fact, I do understand it, I just don't like it. But she has more money now just showing up there because they're a basic aid district. But I wish you the very best at South Orange Community College District, and we will miss you, but I know we will see you around because of your leadership with the state of California and with the Association of Chief Business Officers as well. So thank you for your years of service, all your hard work for the district, but also to me personally, and I do appreciate it. I wanted to acknowledge that. I did mention she was either the incoming president of Association of Chief Business Officers. They, as long with the Association of California Community College Administrators, which Vice President Delgado is heavily involved with, they actually did a, last week, they do a workshop for the state budget. You go there, and it's probably, well, it is all the people within the colleges to get their first glance at the budget. The reason I know this, not only because I know they do these things, but also they took, for whatever reason, and Anne Marie promised me it wasn't her doing, but I was asked, I was the first trustee to ever be asked to sit on their panel. I said they obviously set the bar exceptionally low, but it was to go through the budget and what's taking place. Simply put, though, as was mentioned previously, there's more questions than answers on this budget. It is a rollout. It's the first really blush of it all. But it is fascinating, and a lot of the things that are there, especially with performance funding, changing how we fund community colleges, which is by and large a very obsolete funding process, model, from the 1960s, if you will. So they are, they, the governor, the chancellor's office, everyone is trying to get their arms around how we can better fund community college more fairly. And so this one came up as well, and there's going to be a lot more questions on this one. The other item that came up that had a lot of people concerned was over the 115th community college in California. It's the one that will be an online institution that will be through the state chancellor's office. Again, a lot of questions of how that affects individual colleges as well. My comment on that particular item is we were having the panel discussion, and I was actually very pleased to be invited to be there and participate. But the thing that you have to understand is that if the colleges, the system itself, and in distant education, we actually had that as a board goal many, many years ago, on reaching a certain threshold on distant ed. And it's a challenge for all the community colleges, but if you don't address it as an individual district, eventually the state of California will. And essentially, that's what's taking place right now. All the details have not been worked out, but the concern, again, of not getting the funding that we have with some of our distant ed, being in competition with the state of California. But again, all those questions are going to be answered as we move forward, but it was a very good presentation. My thanks again for being invited. And again, as we move through the budget process, we'll have a lot more. I do want to mention that on February 6th, moving forward, we have the State of the College Luncheon address. It is Reagan's first time. So I will promise you here that as the board president, that's required to make, required or asked to make remarks, I promise you that I'll be, my comments will be shorter than what is normally taking place on that. But the February 6th event, it is a wonderful event, and hopefully we have good attendance.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry. Well, if you show up on the 6th, you know, hang around. So look forward to everyone being there and on the 2nd, and having a good turnout. So with that, I don't really have any other items. Did you have one more? Trustee Malauulu?
I just want to say that I feel like a schmuck because I neglected to also publicly thank EVP Gabel and to wish her well, and it is a tremendous loss for the college. Anne Marie, I really appreciate all the hours of questions that you answered for me. I'm the newest member on this board, and when I joined the team, I was so green. I'm still very green, but, you know, a darker shade of green. And Anne Marie was always very patient, very kind, very thorough. She never rushed me, very supportive in my growth as a trustee. And I just would feel terrible if I didn't acknowledge that publicly during one of our meetings. So I really wish you luck, and I know you're going to be stellar because you're just that type of person. I know you're going to do a great job as vice chancellor. And you left an important print here at LBCC, and you will be missed. So thank you and good luck. And I think Doug might not want to feel like a schmuck either. I don't know. I hate to put words in people's mouths, but I don't want you to be the odd man out. Thank you.
Thank you.
To paraphrase Richard Nixon, "I am not a schmuck." But I would ask that we adjourn in the, in memory of the Wizard of Oz because Jerome has finally come out from behind the curtain. And I'm going to have other opportunities to thank Anne Marie, so I won't go into tonight. We already put her past two hours.
Yeah, we're closed, though. Thank you all, fellow board members. The trustee committees have none to report out at this time. So future reports, you'll see, it's a strategic plan, is on one of our future meetings that we'll be putting forward again as we continually address the strategic plan. Nothing else at this time. We'll move to the report from the bargaining units. Janay is here. If anyone wishes to speak?
Just here. No reports.
No reports at all?
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
That means life is good, huh?
Madam Secretary, public comment on non-agenda items. I do not see any cards. Do we have anyone that's?
There are none.
There are none. There is no need for a second closed session. Anne Marie, I'm a man of my word. So with that, we'll adjourn to our next meeting. At this time, though, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Without objections, meeting is adjourned.